Okay, good evening. I'm Carolyn Trimble of the League of Women Voters of Champaign County. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the NAACP and the Gazette, I welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. Tonight's forum is for the Urbana School District 116, Subdistrict 7 race. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we are unfortunately not presenting this forum in person. We have received many questions for these forums. Similar questions which have been submitted have been consolidated, and consequently, a question may not be asked in precisely the way it was submitted. Due to limited time, we may not be able to get all the submitted questions. After the forum, this video will be available on the League's YouTube channel and Facebook pages after March 12. For more information about the candidates, you should also check out the nonpartisan Voters Guide at votechampaign.org. This forum will be attached to the candidate information in the Voters Guide. It will also be broadcast by UPTV. The UPTV schedule is available on the City of Urbana website. I will be the moderator of this forum. The order for candidates is alphabetical, therefore Sandra Otten will open and John Dimmett will close. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. I will then ask questions submitted prior to the forum, and candidates will each have one minute to answer these questions. At the end, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Candidates will kindly refrain from any negative attacks on the other candidate, will not mention the other candidate by name, and will speak only to what they will plan to do if elected to office. Sandra Otten will begin with an opening statement. Go ahead, Sandra.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn, and thank you all women, legal women voters, for conducting the forum and for the years and years that you've provided that service. I am Sandra Otten, and I live in Urbana and have since 1995, so 26 years. I moved here to go to school back in the day and love Urbana. I'm from Effingham originally, but I've made Urbana my home and recently moved here into the Myra Ridge subdivision where I live now. So I'm a member of Subdistrict 7. And my kiddo went to Urbana Middle School and High School. My grandson goes to, he was at Wiley before the pandemic, but he wasn't being successful during the pandemic and the online teaching, so he is being homeschooled right now. But I do have a step-granddaughter in Circle Academy. And so we're planted in the district. I'm a business owner here. My husband and I own Elliott Counseling Group, and we invested in the South Philo Business District by taking an old building there and revamping it and totally redid that. So my background is in running the mental health agency, and I feel like that's going to bring a lot to my, help inform my participation on the school board should I get elected. I've been the CEO there since 2012 and take care of all the budgeting, and it's a big operation. We have 50 employees. Nothing like a school district. Been trying to study the school district budget, and it is a complicated animal. I'm very aware of that. But I do hope to bring some of my experience through being a business owner who and an entrepreneur and sort of bring that. So that looks like we're all stopped with my opening statement. Thank you.
Okay, John?
A school board member is responsible not only to their subdistrict, but also to the entire school system, the communication point between the administration and the public. I've served on the board since 1987, often as vice president or president. I champion transparent and effective budgeting, rigorous academics, fine arts, quality facilities, union management collaboration, student leadership, and comprehensive programming, often found only in larger cities. I continue to look forward, envisioning a constantly evolving school system, adapting not just to what is, but to what can be. The community knows I suffered a stroke two years ago, followed by a diagnosis of early Parkinson's. For me, this means tremors and challenges and calling up correct words, which will surely become apparent during this forum. However, I still listen respectfully to fellow board members, staff, students, families, and community, and bring your ability to carefully synthesize sometimes opposing viewpoints into actionable steps. I'm student-focused, all students, each student. To be student-focused through an equity lens is to discard all stereotypes, confront their legacies, and view each student as a unique person with unique talents and needs. It is our responsibility to celebrate and develop those talents while providing supports required to meet those needs, allowing each student to achieve personal greatness. This requires a diverse staff, reflecting our increasingly diverse student body. I was instrumental in revising our union contract, increasing starting salaries, so we can better attract the staff needed to support this goal. To retain that diverse staff requires a safe and supportive environment, the bedrock foundational prerequisite of everything else about school. We have serious work to do to restore our sense of safety and support for both staff and students. Urbana's equity journey began decades ago, yet more work is required to truly meet today's and tomorrow's needs. I'm ready.
All right. The first question, and again alphabetically, we're starting with Sandra on the first question. What is the greatest challenge facing the Urbana School District? And if elected, how would you approach addressing Urbana School District's greatest challenge?
Well, undoubtedly, it has to do with how we can get kids on equal footing after having recovered from the pandemic. Right now, that's going to be the next challenge. And there is so much unequal learning. Some people really flourished during the pandemic, and some people are going to be, the kids are going to be really far behind. And so I think that that's going to be the biggest challenge. And I think that the thing that I can do and that the board can do is provide the stability of giving the administration staff the support that they need. I think that to make sure, I guess that there's a lot of turnover in superintendents across the country right now because it's such a hard job because they're targeted so much because of the difficulty of their job during the pandemic. And what we can't do is lose Dr. Ivory Tatum right now and all of the support staff to make sure we give them the support that they need. And that's what my goal would be.
Okay, John, would you like me to repeat the question or are you?
Okay, with it. You know, on this one, I'm going to agree greatly with Sandra that re-entering our students into our school system is our greatest challenge because some students have done very well. Other students have not, just not done well. They've been completely absent. And so we've got a lot of catch-up work to do, which is just going to be very difficult, and it undoes a lot of the progress that we had made prior to this in trying to close the achievement gaps. And so it's truly going to be very difficult and very challenging. Already has become very challenging to our staff. The biggest thing the board can do is to support not just our superintendent, but also our teaching staff. They've had to totally relearn their profession in many ways and adapt to the remote learning. And it's difficult on them to re-enter school. It's difficult on their men and their families.
Okay, the second question, John, you will start. I'm going to just take the first question a little bit further. What other important challenges face the school district and how we do address them? John, you start.
Well, other challenges facing the district is the retention of staff and the hiring of a multicultural or diverse staff. There's a tremendous teacher shortage. And so in order to get our, the best teachers available, we're in competition with districts, not just within a 60-mile radius, but also districts basically throughout the country. And so we've got to empower our HR division, which we have done through the last contract that we negotiated to try to up the starting salaries to make the district more attractive. That's one challenge. The other challenge is the tax base in Urbana puts a real stress on our budgets. And with the state of Illinois facing budget issues, we're going to have some real financial issues that we might have to deal with. So far, Urbana has been pretty healthy in terms of its budget. And so we'll just have to make sure we stay in that vein.
Okay, thank you. Sandra?
Thanks. Well, I definitely was going to mention the tax base as well. Just, I'm just catching up on how to read the whole school budget and understand it, trying to figure out how to understand what's going to be happening at Thomas Paine and at Wiley and how that all is affected and the sales tax. So I think Urbana and every school district has the biggest challenge of figuring out how to do the budget, how to finance, and it's going to be especially trying this year. I agree with John about supporting the teachers. Also would go to, I really have thoughts about the family liaisons, the Latinx families liaisons, et cetera, and just making sure that they get all the support that they need to. It seems like it's been good, but it could be better. And that would be, one thing that I would work on is just really making sure that we don't have turnover in that area and that they get all the support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. John, I'm doing a Sandra-John, John-Sandra kind of pattern. So the next question is for you. What do you bring to the job of school district board member? And what experiences and skills would you bring to the board?
That's for me?
That's for John?
Think I would.
Sandra, for who gets to start?
Right. He started last time, so I'll start this time, right? Is that right?
Yeah, go ahead, Sandra.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I'm trying to remember what you asked exactly. What skills would I bring to the board?
Yeah, what do you bring to the job of school district board member?
Right. Well, obviously, I don't bring 30 years' experience, and my hat's off to John for having been there all those years. And that depth of knowledge is certainly so necessary and admirable. And I also know that fresh eyes and voices is important. I bring a lot of compassion. I root for the underdog. I'm kind of like that kind of person that I get in, and I get in there and do hard work. So I have a great work ethic. I think anyone would tell you that. I desire to do public service. I just am retiring this year, and that was my goal, is to like get retired so that I can do what I can for our community. And I've always been community-minded, and I continue to do that. I've participated on boards. I've participated in many other civic activities and advocacy work. And I love education and the processes of education and understanding them. So my interest and my dedication and my promise that I'll do my best.
Okay, John?
Well, of course, Sandra mentioned the 30-plus years of service on the board, and that's, I'm proud of that service. And I'm proud of the way that I go about things, which is to try to keep an even keel during that process, and most importantly, to listen. And I bring those skills and, as I put in my opening statement, the ability to take those ideas that I hear from and all the various sources that I hear from and try to synthesize it. It's something that I did in my professional life, where I worked for the Regional Planning Commission for 40 years, retiring as CEO. And in that role, I brought head start to the community in a new way and also brought community action and social services. In order to do that within the context of Champaign County government, you had to be a little bit skillful at making sure that things were well organized and worked in a way that promoted the best of everybody. And I'm out of time.
Okay, so the next question, though, is, it's my numbering system that is wrong. What are Urbana's school district's greatest strengths? And John, I think you start this one.
The greatest strength is our student body by any matter of means. We have children from all walks of life that do extremely well. One, you go to our high school and look at our lunchroom, and you see students of all kinds that are not paying lip service to the variety that they have, but actually sitting at the table and enjoying each other's company. And that creates a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of energy in the buildings, all the way from pre-K all the way up to adult ed. And those kids, I think, keep everybody on their toes. In addition to that, I think that the fact that we're a full-service school district from pre-K all the way through adult ed is a strength that this district needs to be very, very proud of.
Okay, Sandra?
Yes. Okay, well, I think the strength of the Urbana schools is just really reflects the strength of Urbana and that it is, it's a community that is pretty united and takes matters seriously, takes matters of justice seriously, takes matters of education seriously, and takes matters of community cohesiveness seriously. I love Urbana and how progressive it is. It's one of the reasons I landed here, and I didn't land in Champaign. I just love Urbana because of its progressiveness, and I love that about its schools, too. So that would be what I would say, the strength echoing what John has already said, too. I have, like I said, I have a step-granddaughter in the school at Cunningham Children's Home, and that amazes me, the services that are provided out there. And so I'm hats off, hats off to the teachers. The strength is in the teachers reflected in the students, then.
Okay, so Sandra, do school resource officers, SROs, have a role in Urbana schools? If so, what should it be?
Well, that's a good question. The school resource officers have a role. Do they have a role in the future? They have certainly, they have a role there now. They had a role pre-pandemic, anyway. I'm not, I don't understand really why the SROs were retained throughout the pandemic. That does not make sense to me. It seemed like it was not a good fiscal decision, and it just doesn't make sense to me. How safety is going to be achieved in the future is a question, certainly. We want the schools to be safe, but could that money be better used for more social workers, more family liaisons, more services for the students? I think so. I'm not saying that I would never think an SRO would be appropriate, but it would be after the prioritization for social work.
I do believe that they have a role and will have a continuing role. And that is in the form of creating our baseline sense of safety in the schools. The fact that we have moved our SROs into of the individuals have teaching background, have social work background, they're trained in de-escalation, they're trained in restorative justice. They know how to deal with alternatives to the criminal justice system through the Youth Assessment Center. I think these are all very valuable issues and, in fact, a cut down on the number of times that our school administrators have to call the police department and have an untrained, a non-SRO officer show up at the building to deal with things. And so what they're not supposed to do is be involved in our discipline system. And that, I think, is real critical, that they not be involved in that.
Okay, thank you. So, John, you go first on this one. Describe inequities in access to educational resources and technology among the schools in the district, particularly the elementary schools. And how do you propose to address those inequities?
Well, I believe the inequities are with the individual students and not between schools. I think we've done a pretty good job of making sure that all of our schools are equal by the technology. If, and I'm concerned and a little bit about the context of the question in the, maybe perhaps the assumption that there is inequities. The inequities are definitely, there are definite inequities amongst our students, between one student and the other student. We've tried to address that as much as we can within the budget that we've got. We finally have moved to a one-to-one, where we have one computer device per student. And that has actually been driven by the remote. It's one of the advantages of the remote learning is that it enabled a cash flow, an income stream that came to us that we could apply so that we could achieve that one-to-one.
Thank you. Sandra?
Well, from my research about it, I understand that we really have not kept up with technology in terms of having a good technology officer that helped make it all equitable. I did not have the experience from those who I've talked to that everybody did have a computer that needed one. One computer, one person, that that did not really work out. It was the ideal, but it didn't really happen. And so I agree that it's not about individual schools. I'm not sure where that question is coming from. It'd be interesting to know if somebody understands it that way. But I do think that we do need to make sure that the digital divide gets undivided and that that needs to be a priority.
Okay, thank you. And Sandra, you'll start on this one. When the results of the 2020 census are available, redistricting must be addressed. How would you organize the redistricting process? And how would the public be involved? How would transparency be guaranteed?
Well, I've heard issues of transparency being a problem across the board, and it's one of the reasons that I'm running. I do believe in transparency. John said he did, too, and I appreciate that. Some examples, I guess, are some parents really feel like they don't get to see the data about curriculum, the math curriculum, for example. So more transparency, more parental involvement across the board seems necessary to me, and certainly during redistricting. I know there's a lot of feelings about Lille having advantages that other schools don't have. And I would just say that I would say that we would be doing the redistrict in the most participatory and inclusive and transparent way possible. Am I an expert on it? No, but I'm planning on figuring it out.
Okay, John?
Carolyn, my camera froze up, and I did not hear the first part of the question. So if you'll repeat the question, please.
Sure. When the results of the 2020 census are available, redistricting must be addressed. How would you organize the redistricting process? And how would the public be involved? How would transparency be guaranteed?
Well, this redistricting that's census-driven has to do with our election districts and not student attendance districts. So it's important that the public understand that. I have significant experience in this, having done it several times when I worked at the Regional Planning Commission and also on the school board. I think it's very important that you establish, first off, what your objectives are in terms of how you want to redistrict. What is the purpose? The purpose of the school district in times past has been to have each school board member represent two schools and have each school represented by two school board members, the elementary schools. And this way, if everybody has a choice of who they wish to talk to, we need to revisit those and make sure that's still the current goal. That's part of the transparency. And the other part of it is that the maps can, as we're in under electronic maps these days, you can create your assumptions that go into the map and then display the maps and allow that to be criticized and looked at by the, before anything is finalized. I'm out of time.
Thank you. So let's see, John, again, what is your experience with tax levies and bond funds? And how is that experience going to be useful going forward?
Well, the budget has been one of the areas that, you know, amongst seven school board members, everybody has an area of strength. And it's necessary to have teamwork and collaboration amongst the seven of you. And budgeting and understanding the tax cycle is one of the items that I bring to the board. It's not required of every board member. It's just that it happens to be the talent that I bring. And we rely mostly on our business office to really run that show. But it's important to understand that under tax caps, our levy, the amount of money that we can levy, is limited. Not the tax rate, but the amount that is levying. And so when you begin with that overarching constraint, then the rest of the work that you do is a matter of allocating money amongst the various various funds that the district has. I'm out of time. I could talk a long time about this.
All of these are complicated questions, obviously. Sandra?
I almost feel like yielding my time to John. Since you're the budget and levy expert, and I learned a lot listening to the past school board meetings when you were talking about budgets, and I learned a lot from you. So, and I really, if I get elected, I hope I can pick your brain. I hope we can figure out a way to do that because that would be important to me. I intend to be a good student. That's all I can tell you about that. Like, and I, you know, I intend to do a lot of studying. I do have time to study. I do have an inclination for it, and I plan on doing it. And one of the things that, when I was talking to the people who were asking me to run and endorsing me, is that they said that what they wanted was somebody who would come to the meetings prepared, study the issues, have read the packets, have talked to the, have talked to the people in the district or constituents, and to really represent, knowing you're representing all of Urbana, to really talk to all the folks in Urbana. And that's what I intend to do, just be a good student.
Okay, we are out of time for questions. We are now to closing statements. And John, since Sandra started with the opening, you will start with a close.
Sure. I want to thank the League and the NAACP and the Gazette for this opportunity for voters to pose questions and gain information about the candidates. With the pandemic, it has been a challenge to move any initiative forward, really to even keep the schools operating. Remote learning works well for some, but is difficult for others. Our equity journey has been setback. When we are finally able to fully reopen our buildings for in-person learning, some achievement gaps may have narrowed, but most gaps will have widened, stalling any hope for equity progress. However, the pandemic has also shown us that some remote remote learning, it does extremely well and is surprisingly effective and should be in the world. The board must empower our superintendent and our staff to research all possible avenues to regain momentum, close achievement gaps, and envision a new Urbana. I also want to put energy into our capital improvements. This starts with placing the Thomas Paine Project under contract by the end of this year. As finances allow, we must implement the plans for outdoor safety improvements to the UHS/UMS campus, plus do some critical indoor updating of both buildings. And now is the time to engage the Wiley community in studying how to develop that campus into a center of excellence, preparing for preparing for action when financing finally allows. Finally, one of my most important priorities is to reinvigorate our efforts interrupted by COVID to formalize the student voice at our board meetings and increase student leadership skills through.
John, your screen froze again.
And often unexpected. It is therefore most important that I listen carefully, study the issues, understand the context of each issue and exercise the best judgment possible to resolve those issues. This might mean adjusting my priorities and learning new vantage points, serving with integrity and collaboration. If this is the type of school board member that appeals to you, I do ask for your vote.
Okay, Sandra?
Thank you. All right. Well, I don't bring what John brings to the table in terms of the experience. There's no doubt about that. And I do, again, I want to appreciate what he has brought to Urbana over the years. I'm looking to the future and I really think that, some people may know it's just a two-year term where it's usually a four-year term. And I think that it would be a good opportunity for the people of Urbana to see what I can do without making the huge investment of four years coming up. And it's two years because of the redistricting, which does need a lot of attention and study and I intend to be part of that. Regardless, you know, I said before that I had a desire for being part of this civic landscape of Urbana. I had contemplated a run for the Champaign County Board, but decided with the pandemic and with my interest in education, that really this was where I needed to step up. And I do want to bring my skills. I too have great, great listening skills and great negotiating skills. And, and I have a lot of heart for education and for our students, for the diversity that Urbana offers and to make sure that the playing field is level for all the students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both, John and Sandra. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters of Champaign County, the NAACP and the News Gazette for sponsoring this forum. Thanks to our timer Ed Roy, who's kept us on schedule. A very special thanks to Jonathan Brims, who put this series of forums together. Just a reminder, it's not too late to register to vote for the April sixth, twenty twenty-one consolidated election. Information is available. The county clerk's website. Candidate information can be found on our nonpartisan League of Women Voters website and also on votchampagne.org. Please vote, vote by mail, vote early, vote on April sixth. Because turnout is expected to be light, your vote will carry special weight. Please check your polling place for April sixth. Please vote. Thank you.